All right, at this time I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of October 24th, 2016 to order. It is officially 7:04 PM. All members of this board are present. At this time, I'd kindly ask if we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 16, 16A, 17, and 17A. Questions, comments, or a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for September 26, 2016. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Before I move into our appointments, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that all members of this board, including the manager and Bev, are wearing an article of clothing that is pink. As all of you know, at our last meeting, we also wore pink, and I see that we have some lovely ladies wearing pink in the audience as well, so thank you for doing that. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and this board traditionally, annually, supports as many worthy endeavors as possible by wearing an article of clothing to support that particular month of awareness, and this month is no different. So, as you will also note, the Wilmington Town Common is illuminated in pink for the month, and that is to support all men and women who are dealing with breast cancer in their life currently now, past, present, and future. So, thank you very much for that. Moving on to our appointments. First one is at 7 o'clock. We're running a few minutes behind. It's with Kathy Ober for the Wilmington Farmers Market regarding an update on our 2016 season. Kathy, welcome to join us at the table. And I apologize, I have one name written, but so if you can introduce, that would be very helpful and appreciated. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Amanda Muncie, the market manager.
Hi.
And I'm Kathy Ober.
Hi.
So, we just completed our sixth season of our Wilmington Farmers Market down on the Swain Green, as we like to call it. I believe we planned officially for two years prior to our inception and just finished our sixth season. We have our Board of Directors, is one of our founders Dana Burnham, our newest member, Christine Carnavari, Cheryl Faro, who's our vendor rep, Robert Hayes, who's the director, Amanda, who is another founder, who's our market manager, who returned to us this very year, which we are thrilled about, myself, Dawn Reedy, and Rachel Toth. Some of the major highlights for us this year were the return of Amanda, who took a role of market manager and has been instrumental in just bringing a whole new vibe to the market, bringing a lot of new vendors to us, a lot of excitement, and a lot more foot traffic downtown. Our new board member Christine created a fantastic new website, I'm sure you've all checked it out, and has also helped coordinate and run a local cornhole tournament fundraiser for a young child who has significant medical and special needs here within our own community. We were fortunate enough to have our animal control officer, Chris Sullivan, on opening day to talk about the new dog park and interact with our town folks, which was very nice. We also instituted a bell ringer program, having different community groups, get different community members, open our market by ringing the bell, and that was inclusive of our Boy Scouts, our Wilmington Good Guy, Scott Garant from the Fourth of July Committee, Girl Scouts, Wilmington High School Cheerleaders. We had our Chicken Day, thanks to the Board of Health for preparing and providing info for that, our volunteers who have been instrumental coming from our high school, young men and women helping us set up, break down, helping the vendors, helping us run our kids' activities and some of our entertainment. And a very special young man came to us from WCTV and filmed us for weeks on end and is putting together a documentary for us, which is pretty exciting. Amanda is going to talk about some of our vendors and other exciting things that we have going on.
Yep. We have eight returning vendors. Three of them are actually Wilmington residents and business owners, KG Creations, Maple Pot Honey Farm, and Seafood Express are all returning, and they are from Wilmington. We also had Emmett's Edibles, Foxborough Cheese, Goet Farm, Lanny's Orchards, and Powerhouse Juice. We also had a new farmer this year, Arrowhead Family Farm, Custa's Fiesta's, Dino's Pasta, Del Surro Natural, Flat Mentors Farm, Happy Cat Granola, and Heart &amp; Soul Bakery, Purple Carrot Bakery, and Tea is the Way. We had various other, about 10 craft vendors, or we call them artisan vendors, so there are local people in the community that did jewelry or certain other artisans that would sell about four or five times in the season. We also, we were really happy this year, I mean, one of our signature sayings is growing a healthy community, and in that community, we wanted to have community groups, and that was just really one of my focuses and the market's focus this year, was just to get as many community groups, nonprofits, to the market. We had the 4H Science Pirates, American Lung Association, Billerica Cat Care, Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, YMCA, Community Teamwork, the list is really long, and we're gonna post it on our website, but we had Friendships Lodge, Grace Chapel Hope and Friendship for Breast Cancer Foundation, Ipswich River Watershed, the Power of Flowers Project, where One Wilmington, the Wilmington Course Community Television, Wilmington Figure Skating Club, Wilmington Relay for Life, and the Wilmington Rotary Club. So, we were, and we're gonna be getting more for next year, hopefully.
Absolutely.
And that about does it. We had tons of volunteers, we had a kids' tent this year, and all of the volunteers, I believe, were from high school doing their community hours.
Outstanding. I certainly applaud all the efforts that you put into it this year and all the previous years. From my standpoint, as one sitting member here on the board, I can say wholeheartedly that it certainly appears, and it's been proven year over year, that you continue to evolve and grow as an organization, and I believe, in my opinion, that every year your market gets better and better. So, that's a credit to both of you and to your extended team and to the vendors themselves, so you should be very proud. I certainly want to commend you also for your community engagement, and I couldn't be more sincere. There's a lot of youth and just various organizations in the town that you give them an opportunity to shine and be a central, you know, centerpiece to the town there, prominently displayed at the Swain, so you are providing a service not only with the local produce and market, but also giving our organizations an opportunity to grow and evolve as well. I had a question for you, if I may, is, and I'll tell you why I'm asking the question, so you don't feel like I'm table-setting here, is that we're in the midst of a facilities master plan, and we're looking at various locations, which includes the Swain Green. So, I just wanted to ask you, as one, there's no right or wrong answer, but just an opinion. Do you like the Swain Green? Does it meet your needs? Do you like the location? Do you feel that the parking is adequate? Do you feel that it's a safe environment for you to have your market? If you could just expand, because that would be helpful feedback for us to have.
Yeah, being a market manager and actually going and seeing other markets, we are very grateful and very fortunate in Wilmington to actually have green space. You go to a lot of markets, they're either on a blacktop or they're in a, you know, on a sidewalk. All of our vendors love our space, all of our vendors rave about it, this is great, the parking's great, they have bathroom facilities, you know, our vendors usually don't have bathroom facilities when they're at other markets, but we give them the Fourth of July building to go and use. So, we have actually been talking about this as a market board, we do know the, you know, some things are changing in the town, but we like the Swain, but we're welcome to move if we need to or whatever may happen in the future.
And I second all of that. As you were asking your questions, I was thinking, yes, 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 yes. We have been thrilled to be there. We hope to find something as lovely or more so if we need to. I know there are a lot of different things changing, maybe something down at the new Yentile site could be an option. We are also talking about instituting a winter market and looking at some possible locations for that for not this winter, but for next winter potentially, and we'll be coming to you with that information as well. But, we are thrilled to be there. It's a nice central location and perfectly fits our needs for the moment.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. There's still a lot of work for that group to do, and certainly, any major changes to the town landscape would go before town meeting, so I'm saying that for you, but also just for the benefit of the public that might be listening, that this is a very long extended plan. So, I just wanted to ask for your candid feedback while we had you here, and I hope, I appreciate you doing that, and I hope you don't mind me spotting you with that question.
No, not at all.
So, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to my fellow board members, and I'll start to my right.
Thank you, and thank you Kathy and Amanda for your presentation, and appreciate you being here tonight. And thanks for you and for all your volunteers, the Board of Directors, for everything you guys do, it's a great addition to the town and for the past six years, and looking forward to the next six years, and hopefully you continue to grow and be successful, and thank you for helping Wilmington grow a healthy community.
I would agree with my colleague here, and just, it's a tremendous success, and congratulations, and keep expanding it and growing it. I know Wilmington Sons of Italy will be one of those community groups that would like to be there. Hopefully, it will stay at the Swain. We want to keep that, we want to keep that Swain area open as it is, at least I do, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Chairperson and my colleagues pretty much said it all, but I noticed you had a new vendor, Dino's Di Pasaccia, the Italian Raviolis. Let me tell you, I bought off him for years, and I was like amazed when I saw it there. They put out a great product, and everyone else does a fantastic job, but if you folks decide to do a winter venue, I'm definitely there with you. I think it's great, and, you know, it's fantastic. And those raviolis are out of this world, especially the spinach and ricotta. Just to tell people out there, his father owned the company, was called Italo-American, right across the state police barracks down in Medford, they sold it to Bertucci's, and I was really glad that the son took it over, because it's a fantastic company. And thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thanks Amanda, and Kathy, right? Thank you. Thanks for coming, first of all, here tonight and giving us the update, but more importantly, thank you to you and all who you represent behind you that have kept the Farmers Market open. Six years ago, seven years ago, I guess, when this was really conceptual, and we were sort of kicking the idea around, go up at the library, and would this be a viable idea? You know, the question really remained, as we entered into that first year, is this a viable idea? Is it gonna succeed? You know, so you get the idea, we got the approvals, and you went and you did it, and after that first year, it seemed like, yeah, this is, the town clearly wants to see this happen, and now six years, which blows me away when I read that, I'm like, oh my God, time has a way of flying, but it has clearly shown itself to not only be viable, but to be really desired and to be an important part of the, sort of the fabric of our community, I think, during that season and coming into the fall. I was so glad when you were able to extend into the fall a little bit, because it was that sort of harvest type of feel, and it seemed so naturally setting, so very, very glad that it has been successful and that it continues to be successful, and that you're here again, telling us that you're gonna be back at it again. So, that's good news for the town. Thanks for all of your efforts and for everyone else. And I would, and, you know, I appreciate you highlighting the fact that there are a few Wilmington vendors that are participating. That was in the beginning and continues to be the hopeful intent that anyone who has a product that's growing it or somehow making it here in town, that they could use this as an avenue to sell their goods. So, I'm sure you're in communication with any of those folks, but if anybody's listening, please contact these ladies and get out there next year. But, thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
I think it's all been said, it's very smooth-run operation, and we appreciate your seizing the opportunity and bringing a Farmers Market to Wilmington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we just plug the website one more time?
Yes, if you'd like to share your website, please.
Yep, so, for any future vendors or people that'd like to know more information, it's www.wilmingtonfarmersmarket.com, all one word, WilmingtonFarmersMarket.com.
You can also find us on Facebook.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you once again for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to our next appointment, running a few minutes behind again. I do apologize. It is with Michael R. Begonis, our Police Chief, with an update on the firing range. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Mr. Hall had asked me last week if I could give you a brief update on the status of the range. We're moving right along at this point. We're, I think, probably about two steps away from actively being able to utilize it. So, I provided the letter to Mr. Hall, which kind of identifies some of the stages we've gone through, you know, it was kind of innovative in how we went about purchasing some of the things, because it's not something that you would typically buy through the state, it wasn't on state bid, so working with Combi and the state, we were able to utilize their Homeland Security vendor, which worked with HESCO to be able to, because they are primarily a military contractor and didn't have any bids, to buy the barriers that are filled with sand and build up the backburn of that site, as well as the granulated rubber trap is not on state bid, it's on the GSA account, but there's certain statutes and laws that allow us to be able to purchase through the Government Service Administration. So, with that, we were kind of happy, we originally had come in with a budget in $130,000 area, we've seen some substantial savings with the production of this range, so the HESCO barriers come in around $19,300. We originally had a cost of in the 30s somewhere, but through some engineering developments, they were able to work with us through the town, able to reduce that down to just over $19,000. And the bullet trap out of the three systems we had looked at, we finally settled on range systems, which is very much in concept similar to the exact trap that I had presented during my presentation last year, coming in at just over $70,000 for that. With a couple finishing items, some site work, paving, installing the actual bullet trap itself, and loading it with the rubber granules, we expect to probably be complete by mid-November at that point, just in time for the cold weather to seek in and get out there and do some training.
Do some winter training.
Yeah. But, I just want to say, you know, honestly, working with Mike Woods and his team, Jerry Lawrence, and then the folks from the DPW, Paula Looney with the engineering of this whole project, it really has been, you know, a wonderful experience. They've been with us the whole way, they've had a lot of great insights to help us with that. We're police officers, we don't build things, but to see what they were able to do with that, breaking down some ledge outcroppings and level everything and build up the berms, so that pretty much the product you see in that picture there, it was pretty impressive to see them be able to do that. And they did that in between all of their other chores that they have to do, so to speak, all the other projects that they run during their, you know, their uptick in construction during the summer months. So, any time off they had or downtime they had between projects, they were in there working on that, so I really want to thank them a lot. We would not have been able to realize the success we've had with this and with the state and the project if it wasn't for them being a great partner through the whole process, so kudos to the DPW.
Will you take questions, comments?
If you would, sure.
Okay. This is just a totally random question, and it's, it looks like a very big space, so just for my own curiosity, because I'm intrigued by a lot of this, and I've, you know, been to competitions and different things as a supporting spouse at one point in my life, what's the greatest distance that you shoot from? Because that looks like a good track, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, we originally wanted the 100-yard range, but we're probably down around 75 at this point. So, I think the total distance of that whole platform is 80, but when you put parking and the Conex trailer, things that, other equipment we plan on putting there, we'll reduce it ultimately.
It was, like I said, there was nothing behind the question other than just real curiosity, because I'm like, if you can stand at the far end and hit a target all the way on the other side, that's, I want to meet that person, because that's pretty cool. So, well, I just want to say overall, I appreciate the update on the proposal, and just in general, the thoroughness that you have shown through this whole process and your leadership, it's clear that you're trying to do this very responsibly and do it right, and, you know, I'm not surprised with that from you by any means, but I'm excited to have you and your team get out there and use it. So, I appreciate the update, and at this time, I'll turn it over to anyone that wants to make a comment, I'll just leave it open for anyone. Yes, Michael?
Yeah, if I may. Chief, thank you very much for coming here this evening. One quick question on the photo that I presume you provided, the bullet trap system is not yet here, is that correct? Okay, what's the, maybe you provided that, and I'm just being ignorant, did you say?
Yes, the granulated trap, and we're talking probably a delivery date of the first week of November for that, and it'll take about a week to install.
And so, you think that you, before the end of 2016, you'd probably be able to do some, have some actual sessions out there?
I definitely plan on that, I believe we'll be able to get that, meet that mark sure.
Great, great. Again, I just want to go on record and say, well, thank you to Chief Begonis for bringing this to us originally and this idea. I've always held that our police force and our officers are tremendously professional and highly trained, but having access to this facility in our town provides the chief and his officers the opportunity to really advance that training and make them even more professional and more prepared for, God forbid, the worst-case scenarios, and frankly, as a resident in this town, that's what I want. So, it was with great, I guess, pleasure, for lack of a better word, that I was able to support this initiative early on, and I'm awfully glad to see the fruits of our collective labor coming to fruition here. So, again, thanks for spearheading this and making it happen, and I'm looking forward to, you know, maybe next year, after you've been using the facility a little bit, having a one-on-one conversation, and I'll go on record here publicly and say thank you for taking me out to the site. I guess it was last week or so, I had mentioned to my colleagues, I guess it was about two weeks ago, that you and I went out and you showed me around where it was at that stage of the development, so it's, I'm very grateful to you and the police force for really seeing this through, and of course, to the DPW for really working hand-in-hand with the Police Department on it, so, thank you, Mike.
And I, if I might, I extend that offer to any member of the board, if they'd like to go out, just reach out to me, I'd be happy to take you out there and get a look at it.
When's the trap system, you said November, so?
Early November. I think we have a date of the 6th for delivery, so.
Abe, if I could just kindly ask if you can let Jeff know when that's in, because I'd probably want to see it after that's in.
Absolutely.
Please, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I just want to say, Chief, this looks outstanding. I remember months and months ago, I took a ride with you and the manager, and it does not look like it does today. And at least one good compliment, I mean, many compliments, you know, you came in under budget, like 55% of what was really going to be appropriate, so folks need to know that. And once again, I live closer than anyone in here, and I remember back in the good old days, I didn't wife with the three kids, never heard any pops going off, and, you know, so it looks good, and there's some neighbors that live outside the area, and I can reassure them that it's not gonna be an issue. Everybody's gonna be safe out there, and I have all the confidence in the world that you folks are gonna do a good job, and any training we give to you, the Police Department, our, you know, the fire as well, you know, is well-needed, and we need to do it, we need to stand on top of everything, and it looks really, really fantastic. Thank you, Madam Chair.
With the vegetation they've put in there, it hasn't really come in yet, you can kind of see it growing in, but that'll abate a lot of the noise as well.
Yeah, it looks wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just kind of a crazy question, I guess. See how high the wall is? What if something goes awry and a bullet goes over the wall or over the berm over here and the sides? It's just all wooded area back there? There's no houses? 125 is on the other side of that, so you have the whole pit area of Beneventos, the old Beneventos, and straight out to 125, and after 125 is another wooded area.
Kevin, I think if a bullet goes over that wall, they're gonna be working details, you know?
Yeah. Somebody will have some explaining to do, because it'd be pretty difficult to pull that off.
Yeah.
There's multiple safety checks, I know you weren't on the board at the time this is approved, but they'll have firearms instructors on there, and there's usually almost a one-to-one or two-to-one ratio with instructor to individuals, and there's a whole safety security process that goes through the whole, you know, nobody has unholstered weapons or weapons that aren't secured at any given time walking around. The only time they're actually pointed downrange or lifted up is if they're actually engaged in a drill. So, there's a whole list of instructions that go before, during, and after the process of a live-fire event, so it's pretty restrictive. This, again, from what I understand, is just for the Wilmington Police Department, not for other departments to take, to have use of.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate your presentation, and I too am glad to see that this appears, that it'll hopefully be under budget, and that's obviously great to see. Also, just want to thank you and your officers, this is gonna be, I think, a safe and affordable project that will help our police officers keep our residents safe, so appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could just point out, I think this is very important, that we've been able to have a facility like this in Wilmington, as much as there, in an ideal world, it would be nice to have some kind of a regional facility that would be close by. We checked into the options, and it just wasn't available, the state, for any number of reasons. This is not on their priority list in terms of trying to develop ranges that are, you know, within a reasonable distance on a regional basis, so the fact that we're able to have police officers training in Wilmington provides a tremendous amount of flexibility, it reduces the amount of, you know, quite frankly, wasted time commuting to and from a place like Harvard or some of the other areas they've had to go to in the past, so, you know, I think it's, it'll, you know, and it's unfortunately, it's one of those things that, it's kind of like an insurance policy, you take it out and you hope you never have to use it, but you're glad, if you do have to use it, that it's there, and I think that's what we're looking at here.
Anything else I can think of? Are your offices excited about this?
Very excited, yes, they're very excited. They recognize the need to utilize this type of training, and it's designed to save lives, it's designed so that they can have the proficiency in making good decisions and, you know, addressing certain threats and escalating, and most importantly, de-escalating through the process for all the drills that we have them work on. But, you know, I think that, you know, being able to train in all different weather environments is important, too, because if you're wearing a big bulky jacket on, you're in a cruiser, how do you deploy in that situation? You need to understand that, and, you know, we've seen a rise in police ambushes over the years, the last couple of years, and some of them have been in cruisers and, you know, realize how tight that is and confining in the space. So, you have to train for that, because you don't want to be figuring that out when it's critical. So, you know, those opportunities, the size of it is perfect for us, we actually be able to pull a cruiser up into there and deploy from that, and do trainings that don't take a full eight hours, we'll be able to go down with an officer on the line and spend an hour or two with them and just work on certain skillsets as they go through it. So, I think that it's really gonna open up the whole thought process and give officers a broader mindset on when to utilize force, when not to utilize force, how to safely do it, how not to, you know, how to hit the target at that point, because obviously, anything that goes downrange, if you don't have accuracy is one of your proficiencies, you know, that bullet is going someplace, and we want to make sure that they have that experience, that they don't have those, you know, oh-my-gosh moments where they're in a complete panic. You know, it's been studied by the military for years, you know, stress reduction, so just the mere fact that you train in certain scenarios reduces your stress before, during, and after an incident. So, you know, you're happy, you just go through it, you usually just follow your training, so it reduces PTSD on the other end, because it's something that you're prepared for, something that you, you know, you're not as shocked when it happens. Not every scenario is exact, but it reduces that, so it's actually, at the end of the day, almost a wellness program for the officers on the other end, because they feel more prepared to do their job. They have less questions out there, they've trained those scenarios, they've seen a lot more. In today's day and age, stress in law enforcement is a real issue, you know, there's a lot of second-guessing going on by the officers out there, by the public, and we want to make sure that we have, you know, the ability to, like you said, escalate if you have to, but most importantly, de-escalate and transition back down out of a lethal force situation so we can deal with things as they come in.
Makes sense.
All of those things are done in split seconds, so, you know, if you're on the street, you know, you have to make that decision, it's critical. If you haven't had the opportunity to make similar decisions, maybe not the exact same one, through a training scenario where we can critique it after, discuss it, and have a conversation about, well, what didn't go well, options that they could have brought to the table, it really reduces all of that, and it makes them better police officers, it really does.
Absolutely, it makes perfect sense. Well, thank you very much for being here this evening and giving us an update, and I'm sure we'll be hearing from you again.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll move into Communications, please.
Under Communications, the first item, we have a letter from Lou Semaglia, the Director of Department of Veteran Services, and I'll read it into the record. Dear Chairman O'Connell, the Wilmington Department of Veteran Services invites you and the Board of Selectmen to participate in remembering and honoring our past and present veterans on Friday, November 11, 2016. We will assemble at the Fourth of July parking lot at 10:45 a.m. and proceed to the Town Common for this year's Veterans Day ceremonies to begin at 11 a.m. I would also like to respectfully request you to the Town Common for the ceremonies. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. We have correspondence from Jane Lyman, the Senior Manager of Government Affairs, and she's advising of some changes in channel lineup and also some pricing changes. Effective 10/31, Channel 231 will cease to be offered, and they're also changing the number of other channels effective November 29. They're essentially being moved between the digital preferred platform and the expanded basic platform. This information is being provided to customers via the bills that they receive. In addition, there are a number of changes in the various fees, including wired and unwired installation fees, which in that case are being reduced from $30 to $29. Additional installation of outlets, the rate there decreases from $14.20 to $14.05, and then a number of other rates that will be changing again. That information is provided to customers.
I will say, I'm impressed, I am being a little tongue-in-cheek here, but decreases. I think this might be the first memo I've seen that has decreased, so it's nice to see that. So there are a few increases noted here, but I can't think of an instance for either cable carrier where they're actually talking about reducing. So that's good.
I might suggest you not get used to it.
Yeah. All right, so Board to Consider, please.
Board to Consider, the first item, again, is a request from Lou Semaglia to, for the Board to authorize use of the, I'm sorry, to illuminate the Town Common green for the month of November in honor of veterans.
If it's okay with you, Jeff, I'd like to read this letter that Lou wrote, because it kind of gives a little bit of a background about that. Are you okay with that?
Sure.
So it's a letter addressed to Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman, October 17. Dear Chairman O'Connell, I believe America's veterans are some of the nation's bravest, hardest-working men and women. However, it's hard to show them the appreciation they deserve when back home and out of uniform. They have more camouflage than ever. Green Light a Vet is a campaign to establish visible national support for our veterans by changing one light to green. Green is the color of hope, renewal, and well-being. Green light is also a term commonly used to activate forward movement. The simple action of changing one light to green is intended to spark a national conversation regarding the recognition of veterans and green-light them forward as valued members of our communities. I would respectfully ask that the Town of Wilmington place green lights on the Town Common for the month of November to show our continued support for the veterans from all eras that live in Wilmington. I would like to thank you for your consideration with this request and for your tremendous support in the past for Wilmington's veterans population. Peace. Lou Semaglia, the Fourth Director of the Department of Veteran Services. So I wanted to just read that letter in as Lou took the time to write that to us, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to grant this request.
I move that we grant the request.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd want to thank you for taking the time to read it in. I was glad you chose to do that. I think it was worthwhile, and Lou makes a very heartfelt request here, so thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
He did send the other letter and asked to request the use of the Town Common for the ceremonies. Is that just something that, do we need to accept that or vote on that? Or is that...
We would, correct?
Yes, I would suggest a vote.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant that request?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, Kevin. Okay, moving on to the presidential election.
Yes, the next item is the request to sign the November election warrant, and I'll just read this into the record. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state election to vote at Precinct 1 and 2, Boutwell School, 17 Boutwell Street; Precinct 3 and 4, Wildwood School, 182 Wildwood Street; Precinct 5 and 6, Town Hall, 121 Glen Road, on Tuesday, the 8th day of November 2016, from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. for the following purpose: to cast their vote in the state election for the candidates for the following offices and questions. Electors of the President and Vice President for this Commonwealth, representatives in Congress, 6th District; Counselor, 5th District; Senator in General Court, 1st Essex and Middlesex District; Representative in General Court, 19th Middlesex District; Representative in General Court, 21st Middlesex District; Sheriff, Middlesex District. And then there are four questions. Question 1, a yes vote. Well, actually, just to read a brief portion of the summary, this proposed law would allow the State Gaming Commission to issue one additional category to license, which would permit operation of a gaming establishment with no table games and no more than 1,250 slot machines. A yes vote would permit the State Gaming Commission to license one additional slot machine gaming establishment at a location that meets certain conditions specified in the law. A no vote would make no change in the current laws regarding gaming. Question 2, again, proposed by initiative petition, this proposed law would allow the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to approve up to 12 new charter schools or enrollment expansions in existing charter schools each year. Approval under this law could expand statewide charter school enrollment by up to 1% of the total statewide public school enrollment each year. A yes vote would allow for up to 12 approvals each year of either new charter schools or expanded enrollment in the existing charter schools, but not to exceed 1% of the statewide public school enrollment. A no vote would make no change in the current laws relative to charter schools. Question 3, again, initiative petition, this proposed law would prohibit any farm owner or operator from knowingly confining any breeding pig, calf raised for veal or egg-laying hen in a way that prevents the animal from laying down, standing up, fully extending its limbs, or turning around freely. A yes vote would prohibit any confinement of pigs, calves, and hens that prevent them from laying down, standing up, or fully extending their limbs or turning around freely. A no vote would make no change in the current laws relative to the keeping of farm animals. And then question 4 is, the proposed law would permit the possession, use, distribution, and cultivation of marijuana in limited amounts by persons aged 21 or older, and would remove criminal penalties for such activities. I would provide for the regulation of commerce in marijuana, marijuana accessories, and marijuana products, and for the taxation of proceeds from sales of these items. A yes vote would allow persons 21 and older to possess, use, and transfer marijuana and products containing marijuana concentrate, including edible products, and to cultivate marijuana, all in limited amounts, and would provide for the regulation and taxation of commercial sale of marijuana and marijuana products. A no vote would make no change in the current laws relative to marijuana. Those are the questions.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to consider signing the warrant for the presidential election to be held Tuesday, November 8, 2016, as presented by the Town Manager.
I would make a motion to that exact effect.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request from Joseph Martinello from Where One Wilmington to place signs on the Town Common providing notice of the Festival of Lights, which will take place on the 3rd and 4th of December.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a request from the Town Clerk, Sharon George, for an additional election worker, which I think at this point would be the last. I recommend Gene Nassif, fear ends a drive to be an election worker.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to appoint Gene Nassif as an election worker?
Motion so moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks.
The final two items under Board to Consider relate to the cable license renewal. The Comcast cable license, which is a 10-year license, is due to expire in the spring of 2018. There's a process that all communities are required to go through as the license reaches that point in time. It's called an ascertainment process. The Cable TV Advisory Committee, which in the past has participated or been involved in this process, once again needs to be reactivated, if you will, and essentially, their role is to gather input and information about the needs of the community. And quite frankly, at this point, in terms of cable process, the issues that are most important deal with the local access. Right now, as you may recall, the town receives, or actually, WCTV receives funding from the Comcast and Verizon. 5% of the gross net revenue from Verizon goes to WCTV, and then they also, per the existing agreement, have made payments for capital improvements that WCTV may see fit to provide. So this committee will be involved in that process along with cable counsel. What I'm seeking this evening is for the Board to appoint Anne Marie Fiore to serve on that committee. Previously, the prior school department IT Director, Neil Ellis, was on this committee, so as Anne Marie is replacing Neil, I would be looking for a vote to appoint her to the committee. In addition, on the committee are Kendra Rosette, who is the IT Director from the town, George Breslin, and when the new Assistant Town Manager is hired, he or she would also serve on this committee.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Anne Marie Fiore to the Cable TV Advisory Task Force, as described by the manager?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Also, with regard to appointments on the Cable TV Advisory Committee, previously, the Board had appointed Sean Neville in his capacity as Executive Director of WCTV to serve on the Cable TV Advisory Committee. Based upon some recent discussions with Bill August, who is our cable counsel, he advised that, in fact, the appointment be modified so that Mr. Neville serve as a non-voting liaison, again, given the fact that there are certain benefits that derive from this license that go to WCTV. It was his recommendation or opinion, essentially, that serving as a full-voting member could create a conflict, so it would be my recommendation that the Board modify its previous vote to designate Mr. Neville as a non-voting liaison to the task force.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Sean Neville as a member of the Cable TV Advisory Task Force?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion, but before I do, I just want to give Sean a plug. I think he's doing a terrific job in his new role as the director over there, and with that, I move that we grant the request.
Great, thank you. Just want to clarify that I, my intended motion was to consider modifying the appointment of Sean Neville, and I apologize that I didn't state it in that manner, so if we can just, for the purpose of the record, if you can restate your motion.
As stated by the Chair.
Okay, and seconded. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, at this point, public comments. And moving on to new business. I will start to my left, please.
Just one question. New business is labeled here as new business. Are we comfortable with that? Is that how we've been advised by counsel after our last discussion about how to label this?
Yes, I did speak with the Town Counsel about this. It was his advice that the reference to committee reports be removed since, in this, I would suggest this process be adopted going forward. If it is the intention of any member of the Board to provide an update on a particular committee that you may be involved with, or that you advise either me or the Chair in advance, and we'll post that as a, either a Board to Consider, depending upon the nature of it, we'll post it on the agenda, so that the point that he was making is that anything that comes up as a committee report would presumably be known about in advance of the meeting and should be specified on the agenda. Otherwise, new business would be items that have not previously been discussed.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Just a couple of quick things. We're not going to meet now for a couple of weeks, and between now and our next meeting will be Halloween, so I always try to take advantage of this opportunity with the microphone and a camera to please ask parents and just folks to be careful. It's nighttime, and the kids are wearing costumes, and they're running around the streets, and, you know, just be mindful of the young people out on the street at Halloween time. And Veterans Day, Wilmington always makes me feel very, very proud on Veterans Day. The ceremonies that happen that Lou Semaglia really conducts, they're worthwhile. It's not a huge investment of time, and if you're a resident here in town and you can carve out a half an hour to come down and help celebrate our veterans, we look forward to having you down there on Veterans Day. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Michael?
I'm good as far as new business. The only comment I'll say is I took advantage of the early voting tonight, and the chairperson was being very gracious, saying we were running a few minutes late. When I went to vote, I forgot one thing, I forgot my reading glasses. As you know, I need reading glasses. I just hope I voted for the right person, that's all I hope for, but other than that, I'm the reason why. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything over here?
Yeah, I kind of peeked ahead to the important dates, and I just, I noticed that November 3rd was, I thought, a scheduled facilities master plan committee meeting, and I don't see it on here. Was that canceled? Because at the last meeting with the Cecil Group, they didn't show, or they came late after the meeting was postponed, and there was another meeting scheduled for November 3rd.
That's right, and there was discussion after, Steve Cecil did come to that meeting late. He got there about 7 o'clock. There was a mix-up in terms of the time. We spoke about it. The original plan was to have a meeting on the 3rd. That meeting has now been canceled, and the plan is that the next meeting will be on the 17th. Prior to the meeting of the 17th, the information that he was intending to present the other night will be sent in advance to members of the committee, so that there's an opportunity to see it before the actual meeting.
Okay. So the 17th date's actually noted. Okay.
Yes.
Understood. Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
No. Good.
Just two quick things. Just one, I want to urge everybody to get out there and vote, and obviously, take advantage of the early voting. It's my understanding that I believe over 500 people voted today on the first day, so that's great, and hopefully, everybody will take advantage of that. And then, as Selectmen Shampoo said, Lou always puts on a first-class ceremony on Veterans Day, so I hope people will come out and support our veterans on Veterans Day.
Thank you. I think all of the points that all of you made, I would certainly want to echo that. I want to mention this just because it's in our packet and I think it's appropriate, is Wilmington's Got Talent is... appropriate, is Wilmington's Got Talent is going to be presented by the Bezzel Senior Center on Saturday, November 5th, 2016, at 2 o'clock at the Wilmington Middle School. Tickets are available at the Bezzel Senior Center or at the door the day of the show. In all proceeds, we go to their scholarship fund. I couldn't be more sincere and genuine when I bring this up. I don't, we all have met our seniors and went, most recently, quite a few of us did, to the St. Patrick's Day celebration that they had, and the energy that they have is just boundless. So, I just wanted to put a plug out there for our seniors, and I'm really going to try and make this, and I hope a lot of people will too. So, hopefully, that's appropriate that I mention that, and I think that will do it for this evening. So, at this point, we'll move on to important dates.
Madam Chair, can I apologize? There was one item that I neglected to mention that I really, I feel compelled to mention, and I know Jeff is going to mention it in just a moment, but I really feel like I want to jump on top of it a little bit more. Tomorrow night, October 25th, is at 5:30 p.m. at the Wilmington Middle School, a public meeting of the Surface Transportation Board. Surface Transportation Board is the federal agency that will potentially be permitting the New England Trans Rail facility at the Olin Chemical Superfund Site. So, this is an open meeting, and a public meeting, for them to, forgive me, Jeff, but for them to present their feelings or where they are in the process, and to hear from the public what the public sentiments are about this. Is that a reasonable summary of what the expectation is for tomorrow night's meeting?
Essentially, the idea is there's a scope of factors, if you will, or criteria that the Surface Transportation Board, their Office of Environmental Analysis, has identified for evaluating this particular site. There's probably 20 or so categories, everything from environmental justice to noise, pollution, traffic, so a series of categories, and what they will be looking for tomorrow night is for people to offer comment on whether that list of categories is inclusive of everything that should be considered, and to the extent people are so inclined to focus on any particular categories.
Thank you for that extra detail. That all being said, I just, I want to encourage folks to come down and participate in this process. I have a fairly strong feeling that the use of that site for New England Trans Rail is just ill-suited and doesn't belong at that site because of all of the history that has gone on there with regards to it being a Superfund Site. Let's clean the place up. Let's not have rail cars coming in and out of the site. So, if we can fill the room, or at least have a good representation of the population there, so that the Surface Transportation Bureau can see that we're serious about this issue, I think that would be a positive thing. So, thank you, Judy, for the extra time.
Sure. Okay, important dates.
Under important dates, we have early voting, as was previously mentioned. Monday is 8:30 to 7:00, Tuesday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., and that will run through November 4th. Then, we have the curbside collection of yard waste, which runs from October 24th through November 26th. Again, as was noted, tomorrow evening at 5:30 is the public hearing at the middle school, beginning at 5:30 on the New England Trans Rail's proposal to have a transloading facility at the Olin property. October 26th is a brush drop-off date, Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. Once again, on October 29th, a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. October 29th, this is a Saturday, early voting at the Town Hall, beginning at 9 a.m. and running through 1 p.m. October 30th, the Hardin Tavern Harvest Festival, 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. Also, on October 30th, is the Horables Parade, Rotary Park, 4:30 p.m. Also, November, it actually starts at Rotary Park. November 2nd, a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. And again, on November 5th, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. November 5th, Wilmington Has Talent, the middle school, 2 p.m. November 6th, another Hardin Tavern Open House, 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. November 8th is the Presidential Election Polls open at 7 p.m. and will close, 7 a.m. and will close at 8 p.m. November 9th is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. November 10th is the registration deadline for Recreation Junior Basketball, grades 1 and 2. November 11th is Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, 11 a.m. Town offices will be closed. November 12th is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. November 14th, Board of Selectmen's meeting. I would just note here, where it does say Room 9, we are looking to schedule that meeting for the auditorium based upon the agenda that evening, but it will start, at least at this point, at 7 p.m. The Facilities Master Plan Committee Town Hall, again, this was originally slated to be at 7, start at 7, but it's going to start at 6 p.m. here at the Town Hall. I would also add one other date to the important date lists here. The Shawshin Community Open House will take place on Sunday, November 6th, from 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. at the Shawshin Tech.
What was the time? I'm sorry?
2 to 4.
2 to 4, November 6th.
Thank you. Does that conclude your dates, Jeff?
It does.
Okay. Hearing those dates, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and good night.